Welcome, everybody. I'll call the order our Thursday, April thirteenth, City Council Work, County Council Work Session. Do you hear adoption of the agenda?
Salute.
Second. Vaguely say hi.
Hi.
You may is not hearing any move on. Well, I'm gonna turn it right over to. City Planning Directors, Mr. Bennett, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Um, so the, the main item here for discussion is a set of questions related to some. Uh, potential code amendments that would create this right of. Right away quarter permit. Uh, permit for things in the right away corridor that span more than, you know, one parcel or two parcels. Um, you know, such as example of that is, of course, the, uh, the. Five twenty-two Rapid Transit Project. And so our code doesn't address this type of situation. So we're, you know, we're looking, you know, we're sort of maybe sixty, hopefully sixty-eight percent there writing. A draft ordinance, but um, I thought it would be good to go ahead and start talking to you about these things. And so. We're closer being on the, the right track when uh, we do bring you full ordinance review. So uh, the, there's a number of, of, of things that address the way our, our tree code is set up. You have, uh, you know, definitions and you have potential application requirements and you have potential application criteria for approval of. Of the application. So that's why this is sort of organized the way it is. Um, and so the, the first one is sort of a very basic question, like how, how do we want to define the right away for? How do we wanna, you wanna give uh, the applicants a chance in these cases where it's really impractical to try to replant all the lost canopy. Uh, in the corridor. We wanna designate a, a corridor where they can replant, you know, close by. And give them incentives to plant close by.
I think you mean they can't replant in the right of way. So you're creating a core.
They can't, they can't replay on the right way. So we wanna, the idea is to create a corridor where they can repair. Thanks, Kim. Um, and, and so then we also want to, in, in setting that up, the, the, the second set of questions is about how you um. Create an approach that creates an incentive replanting and in the corridor surrounding the right of way. Uh, and so I think those, you know, are the main things you wanna try to address and make sure we're all on the same page with that. And, and what are, what we're trying to achieve. The other question that um. Maybe sort of implicit here, or at least, you know, is uh, that this is the, what the approach doing. It's, it's saying that. For those plantings that can't occur in the corridor, uh, that uh, they're, they're, the, the, the first line of um. Of mitigation would be paying a fee in lieu, uh, that's equivalent. Uh, based on this formula we'll talk about to replanting, uh, you know, the canopy that was lost. So that's really the, the main thing we. Where we, the approach is, there's this much lost canopy. Based on all the trees that need to come out because of the right away quarter project. And so if, if you give them the opportunity to plant, to, to replace that canopy in corridor. Uh, then you know what, uh, how do you handle what they can't replace in court? Um, so the first question is about the definitions of the product, which is um. What is a right away quarter plan? And then, you know, what, uh, you know, what, what is the, the project? So um. And the first question relates to the first definition of, um, you know, right away quarter plan and what kind of, what, what is the target area around the right? That is the corridor. We're suggesting that starting place for discussing that, discussing that is, is a thousand feet on either side of the right way. So the way it's envisioned here, uh, you probably could be clarified that it's the outer line right away. Uh, but yeah, we could say the center line, it's easy to find the outer line. So I, I would think that's the most practical way to find it. But anyway, so I, I think that the. Um, the first thing is, you know, what do you think about that as delineating this corridor target area for? Um, for replanting.
Thanks, Mr. R. Thanks, Steve and Kim for the hard work on this. This is, this is really excellent. Um, I was thinking about this because a thousand feet in the case of. Well, we have a very small community, so I was trying to think of whether it should be a thousand feet on either side or whether it should be potentially um, some sort of aggregate. If, if there's not a thousand feet available on one side, then potentially. The additive on the other side. The other thing I just wanted to throw out is for discussion is, I mean, because we have um. Several parcels, several. Multiple parcels that the city owns that need restoration that could benefit from this kind of replanting. That are not necessarily adjacent to very specific areas where we might have. Deforestation through a, a, a developed, a project that's going through our community. And I wonder if there could also be specific, rather than just having a, or maybe it's. Both having a, a numerical value in terms of distance, but also some specific areas that are identified as environmentally. Essential.
Target areas?
Exactly. Target areas. Thank you. Because, I mean, for example, uh, along Ballenger Way, we have. The city owns multiple parcels that have some trees that are need, that are um. Growth that just kind of took over, uh, that could be removed and restored into something that makes sense. And would really benefit the community. There's other places too, near Grace Paul Park, where there's some initial things, but they're very far away from where you'd ever see specific corner about.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an interesting idea. And so I guess I wanna clarify, do you think uh, that we should target those areas as giving them credit? For in corridor planting? If we've got, we know we have some areas or we have, say, you know, that the, um, the, the city has a list of these areas that we can continue to update. One, do, you know, that it's, they would get more credit for doing that as an in corridor. Want to incentivize that and say, uh, you know, you can do it in this quarter or whatever the mission is. Or you can plant in these uh, target areas and get credit for in, in corridor placement. Is that fair?
Yeah, I, I think so. See, I, I really appreciate the, the clarification to it. It's really, I'd like to hear what my colleagues think about this. I, I think that. The, the idea would be to replace them as close as possible, but if that's impractical, impractical. Then to find places that the city has said, we need restoration here, or and it could really benefit the community as, as a whole, as a whole. And maybe it's a. You know, based on a sort of a numerical scale, this is the primary one, secondary, whatever else. I think about, Steve, going back to the Burke and Gilman Trail Restoration, we had to remove some trees. There was. Several places throughout the year that they had to plant because they couldn't plant them back in order. They did restoration places around the, the city, which were quite beneficial.
Yeah. Okay. Folks think about that.
Uh, yeah, I, I have a couple of questions here, Steve. First of all, I'm having a hard time actually visualizing a thousand feet. What is it? Is it half a block?
Oh, it's a thousand feet. I guess the easiest way to think of it is, you know, like three football fields long. So it's, it's a pretty long distance, so a bit of a mile.
So.
How much of a mile? Okay, so, okay, so like two blocks. So. If we're thinking about the five twenty-two corridor, then that thousand feet would extend down to the Burke, Burke Gilman Trail and beyond. So, so like places along the Burke Gilman, for example, where it could take another tree or two would be okay for this then.
Definitely would be inside there.
Yeah. Okay. And then also side streets that could use tree, uh, street trees would also be eligible then up to of opportunity.
Right, yeah. I mean, this is, this is sort of saying that you could do it in private property or public property.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so, so there would be a lot of um, sort of looking for, uh, you know, how viable is it to do like street trees on this area? So. That, that would be a process in itself, developing the plan and getting some city, you know, staff by often. Yeah, those are good places.
Okay. Um, and Burke Gilman Trail, that right of way is county owned. Does that, does that pose any kind of problem? Permission? Just permission. I don't know if that's wrong. All right, thanks. So I'm still, I'm still sort of, you know, visualizing here.
Thank you, Smear. And thank you, Speta, for your great summary. What's, what, what the proposal is. Um, I wanted to echo Councilmember French's. And sort of about the thousand feet, just because, yes, a thousand feet at one sixty-fifth puts you in like Washington, yeah. So, so we. Yeah, obviously not very viable. So we'd have to be a bit more questionable about that. My main question though is, um, the uh. This process will basically figuring out, um, uh, where the trees can go secondarily, can certainly a little bit from the equity standpoint. Because, for instance, your example of planting your brace pole, you're making a treaty area, treaty or. And you're basically gonna be an area that is having to remove from having more trees. And so. But I don't know how to address that issue, you know, if you literally can't plant. Is there some way we can get the intent of not having the average canopy? Cover of the city be some percentage, but also neighborhoods having a certain percentage. I know that we do do that level analysis where, for instance, the southern neighborhoods tend to have less canopy, the northern neighborhoods do. But, you know, just to not make the inequity worse in terms of canopy.
Well, I guess first um, thought is, you know, that, that sort of, um, all we can do is require mitigating the, the impact on any one of the, whatever you're talking, you're talking. So um, in the development of that plan, uh, it, it's going through. Um, you know, an area where there's more trees here, there's less there. And I think, you know, that's the, we wanna create the kind of flexibility for the arborists, uh, you know, on both sides. Like, oh, you know, this area could really, you know, these three trees, you wouldn't do it in this area. But, um, and, and we, you know, we could kind of set up some, you know, preamble language saying that, you know. Ideally, the plan will, you know, equalize canopy across whatever the corridor width it is. So, so you definitely could have like a, a criteria like that, sure. Great, thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, um, so on the subject of equity and neighborhoods, uh, this is a topic the Tree Board has discussed. And they're interested, uh, they've been looking at the canopy analysis of where in the city there is high canopy or lower canopy. And they're interested in taking this sort of approach where they can recommend some neighborhoods that are tree deficient. And I don't know how, you know, how could you incentivize it, but they're interested in, in helping to kind of identify locations. Much of it would probably involve outreach to the public because in these neighborhoods, there's isn't a whole lot of city-owned property. So it would be reaching out to homeowners. Um, and then connecting them with the developer. Uh, but they've identified and they've been kind of focusing on the corners of the city, which I think are a bit more recently adducted. So like the northwest corner, we're like two of fifth and Shoreline, uh, the north, northeast corner, you know, Rising Park, uh. Kind of the area around Rye Rest Elementary that's in, in the city. Um, those are various. But the Tree Board is also very interested in this neighborhood equity aspect, making sure that, you know, if we're gonna be planting a lot of trees off corridor, let's put them where they would have the most incremental impact.
Real quick, I talked to a couple of people at church and I'm interested that, it's interesting to me that some transit's counting all their trees. They're actually counting tree canopy. Is that correct? Yeah, they seem to be because they, I've talked to you, they said, no, they want to count our front yard, our side yard, they count every tree on our property. So. They're kind of looking at that already, I think a little bit, yes, they don't.
So, thank you. Um, regarding the question that you asked about corridor, I wouldn't even refer to corridor. I would just. My interest would be that, uh, they restore the area that they, uh, cleared abruptly. And that they, uh, restore the canopy for the benefit of Lake Forest Park.
And. So any, anywhere?
Anywhere.
Okay.
Public, private, northeast, southeast, southwest, northwest. Um, I think, you know, this is a, is a regional thing. It should be for the benefit of all. And um, why I say that, you know, I mean, I got trees here because historically we've had trees there. Uh, they're not gonna be able to put back all the trees along, in this case, five twenty-two or well, or. There's, I could just say, the trees back where it benefits the community. It's not, you know, I, I believe in, in equity and as opposed to quality. Um, so that's, um, it's for the benefit of the public. I would also caution that if you don't plant tall trees for other properties that have to use them all.
Yeah.
Who's not my neighbor that?
Um, so again, it goes back to an equity. Does that homeowner want that tree there as opposed to another homeowner that would say, I would love to have that tree in my yard? Um, I would also say. Infrastructure as opposed to roads, uh, because utility projects create a lot of damage. So I wouldn't distinguish between roads. So we're, otherwise they could just say infrastructure. Um, and the other is that I, I, I prefer actually with like a tree, not the money. Because you'll never get the value of the tree if you receive the money. So I wouldn't even get, I, I would just sort of say, uh, fee and lieu are the sort of the best support.
Does anybody know how Shoreline handled this? Because they had a lot more trees that we were thinking about.
Yeah, they actually had a program that they partnered with Sound Transit. So homeowners could plant trees on their nerves.
And is there any bunch of trees could be planted back where they?
Oh, Sound Transit will plant back along the whole thing, yeah. Yeah, they'll plant along the whole thing, but they have the problem with you, when you remove a canopy within an area, you can't put back that same canopy. Take that area. So it's so many trees that they will have problems finding locations for the trees. And so it goes back to. Easier we make it for them or anybody, the more you'll get it returned. And I think it's, I could rather than equality. And so I wouldn't even have water. I should say like. So anywhere within the city.
Yeah.
Would you prioritize or anything?
No, I, it goes back to the priority as it's, uh. A tall tree in somebody else's yard may be more beneficial for the tall tree.
Definitely, to be made frank. Thanks, Mr. R. Well, and on point, uh, I was actually mentioned earlier, the, the question is, he's in the way. I really do not think that is an approach. I, I really think it should be, uh, you know, planted in kind if, if at all possible. The other thing I wanted to just bring up for discussion too is we. There's been the term street trees brought up too, and there's a different, very different difference, the big difference between street trees, in my opinion, and trees that. Provide canopy, for example, because some things that you're gonna see parked in a park, that's the wrong word, but planted in a, in a planning strip adjacent to a, 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 a street. It's not something necessarily that's gonna go up. Into the power lines or anything else. It's gonna have to be very specific species or specific group of species. And canopy, if they're reducing, uh, to Mr. Meeble's point, if they're reducing the canopy, you're never really, it's gonna take a long time to get that canopy back. So. I think we should get away from the street tree. Vernacular, if you will, and focus on canopy restoration as, as mitigation, as it comes to. Because some people like maples and they're, or apples or cherries, but they don't provide a full act of lot of canopy and they take a long time to grow as well.
Yeah, I think that's built into the, um, incentive. The, the whole point is, you lost, with this project, we lost this much camp. And so if you propose a replacement, they can have the street trees, you're only getting maybe two hundred fifty square feet. Whereas if you do with big leaf maple, when you're getting fifteen hundred ninety square feet of maturity. So there's, there's a built-in incentive not to try to, you know, replace that canopy with street trees.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes. Because of the timeframe, so if you have a canopy, take several many, a thousand square feet. Can't plant a lot of creatures. You plant thousands of square feet with very small trees. And then, then you're, you're about a thousand square feet. So it struck me in here, are we considering you're replacing canopy one to one at the time of planting or is that an expectation that in ten years, for example? You get a return on. Well, look, our, our, our current tree ordinance is based on the idea that we're, um, trying to get canopy and maturity. So this would refer back to the, the tree, it's with regard to. Right, yeah. So what we have a tree list and it says, you know, you, you get, you, you get fifteen hundred square feet of big maple if you plant the sound like.
Malu, the fee, and the money we need. You know, we all talked about this, but Philippa brought it up earlier in her neighborhood. We really need to go on beyond just planting trees. We need to have a, you know, a forestry. Plan. We need to be able to take care of the trees. If they have to pay us for taking away trees, then that'd be put in a fund to actually. Do like Phil was talking, there's a person on her street that has trees coming down at the time because she has no money to do it. And it takes the power out of the whole neighborhood. So I'm just wondering, you know, because we forest management's a big deal. You know, and I, if we want all these trees, we gotta keep them healthy. So I don't know. Is it important to us to take care of the ones we have to, plus anything wants?
I think all the draft says right now is a three-year monitoring.
Right, all the trees that are planted, uh, in relation to the project. But the, the, the good thing about collecting that fee and lieu is you can, you know, you can do whatever. Council adopts criteria for that, but the tree fund, uh, language right now says, the city can use it for the purpose of the council being appropriate. So we can come up with a plan or, or you can add to those criteria as well, saying that, you know, money's related to these types of projects will be used for X. And to stipulate that.
So. Now that I've had a chance for to think, um, and thank you very much for all the work on this. Also, um. I also am a little wary of bees in lieu. Being too generous in the sense that, okay, we'll just take the money, don't bother with the trees. And I, I really do want bees to get harvested. I do think it's, it's, it's potential good in having some funds that the city can draw on to, um. Main, uh, take care of trees. And you heard me talk, uh, from the days before about the fact that we are in a situation now where. There's a certain generation of trees that are aging out all over the city right now. And those are the ones we see coming down. They're the ones we see taking down the paralyses. And, um, the idea that I was discussing earlier with the mayor was that just in the way we give a break to. On our fees for sewers to those who are eligible for, um, the, um, senior low income. Break on their property taxes, maybe we can do something to help that same population with. Maintenance of their trees, particularly if those trees pose a hazard to city infrastructure. Or even, I mean, I don't know if you count utilities, the city infrastructure, but infrastructure in general. So anyway, um, that, that's sort of riffing on that a little bit. But when it comes to where in the city of trees. I really do, uh, agree that there are areas of the city that are more. That would then benefit more by having additional trees than other areas of the city. And I think that. That weighing that into the equation makes sense. There's also parkland in the city that could benefit from more tree cover, more. And I'm thinking particularly of Horizon View Park. Now, I don't know whether around the reservoir is like revotting for trees. Um, it possibly is, but that's one bare spot up there.
Yeah, I think, I think they, they, they don't want trees that would create a security issue.
Okay, yes, people could like climb up them, I think, okay. Uh, but anyway, you know, so, so, so if I was, if I was gonna make kind of a priority list for where trees might or. Where would want to put new trees, I think, you know, what Tom talked about, just monitoring city-owned land is, is important. We need to have that on the list, but I do think the issue of neighborhoods. With fewer trees, that, that really does come first to me. And, and actually, some of those neighborhoods would be within that thousand feet, I think, that particularly that southern. Um, you know, especially if you would do what you talked about, move the thousand feet, kind of, you know, put it all on the. West side, it would get that neighborhood. Sher, the, the Sheridan Heights and a little further up there, that it just has fewer trees in other areas.
But like there, you're getting back to where John is not careful, where a lot of those people don't want the trees.
Oh, because they want that view.
Oh, yeah. So they might put a tree there when they're gonna secretly come down in three weeks anyway. That's kind of, you know, I think. Well, I think, how are we gonna get out? I guess I'll clarify, my lieu of the idea was just at the very bit. That's, that's the very end. But there's no way we could do something. If we get some money out of them, can we use it to take better care of what we have? So.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I thought the corridor. Was an idea that would, um, help us replace some of the value you're losing from the trees where they're being taken from. But as I'm listening to you, I'm not sure that's the case. But, and I, I, I don't know.
Oh, I, I think some of the trees definitely can, can go there, but, but a, a big strip is going to be gone.
Yes.
Where there are trees now. So those, those trees, you know, they're gonna have to go somewhere, right? Because, because there's quite a lot of trees, otherwise.
Oh, the corridor in your mind is still viable because it's helping mitigate.
You that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, that, I think is, you know. Someone has the difference.
Yeah.
I think it's benefit of the public. And why, why create a corridor? It's artificial. You can make a corridor that's hundred feet wide, three hundred thirty feet wide, a thousand feet wide, ten thousand wide.
Well.
But actual, but let me, yeah, please. Um. When you talk about value, value is subjective to the perspective of the person. A tree, I go back to a tree, a product, somebody's view has a different value, eerie in a park or a tree. Where people don't have shade. Why? I do not think that we should talk about corridors. I think we should talk about like first park. We're not so big. That, you know, we're planting trees in North Seattle and nothing in Georgetown. Talking about a little suburb. And there are reasons why there are fewer trees in Sheridan Heights than there are in other areas of the city. And if you give those homeowners a fee and lieu, you will have timber trees in new corridors. Which if, you know, if you spend the money somewhere else to provide a place where people want tree. Is that a bad thing? And I would say, no, it's not. I mean, you provide benefit for the public. We shouldn't impose our values on those people that may not see what you consider to be a benefit.
I understand what you're saying, John. I guess I was really thinking of how we actually. Implement the policy. So having some. You know, we've, we've got to have some sort of structure to it in some way or another. So I, I'm not, that's why I was thinking of sort of a list of. Priorities. And I, I'm not saying that, that people should be given trees that they don't want. But that maybe we have to start someplace and then move to the next place and then move to the next place. Um, because otherwise. How do you even structure a program to, to provide entries to the city, to the citizens or. Or decide where in the city, city last, I'm not saying property. So, let's construct us.
Maybe if we had a, a Tree Board and a city arborist who could develop a program for where they think we might be, what trees are appropriate. Different parts of the city, that we could let the volunteers who have the knowledge, experience and professionals who have the. Knowledge and experience develop the program. And the policy is that we allow those who have the real interest and experience and knowledge to do it. And our policy is that we replace trees.
I mean, isn't that something that you mentioned earlier, what you are doing?
Um, yeah, then they are interested in that. So, yeah, I, I kind of like the idea of, of sort of like a tier list. So in my mind, tier one would be the in corridor. Because I think we are doing, not, well, the developer would be doing damage to the five twenty-two corridor. By removing a lot of trees in a concentrated area. So I think that would, from an equity perspective, that should help, that should be restored. So my top tier would be the corridor. Second tier would be neighborhood equity zones that are identified by Tree Board, city staff and the like. And then third tier could, I guess, be a kind of an open grab pad. If there's other neighborhoods where private property owners are city-owned property. And then the fourth tier would be, you know, we can't find anywhere to put the trees. At that point, we'll do it in lieu of fee. But in my mind, the in lieu of. Fee should be like, you know, we just could not find any more places to put the trees. So we'll take the cash value instead.
Fun point. I, thank you, Larry. I was thinking, rather than sort of tiers or somewhat formulaic, you know, the sort of, sort of if then kind of, um, uh. Very crude kind of equation. Um, and I think that, um, I, I want to, just for a second away from that. I, I appreciate what Mr. Libo says about the quarter question because the quarter could be whatever we define it to be. Um, and, and I also hear what you, you all are saying about the question of equity and, and placements. Around the community because there are definitively places that. Around the community because they're definitively places that have been completely denuded. Because of various phases of development or annexation. There's all sorts of reasons that, that are really not germane to our conversation today, but are important to in, in regard that. The trees are not there and. Mr. Redd, I wanted to ask the question about the maintenance. Isn't it in our code that it's a five year maintenance schedule for? Environmentally sensitive areas and restoration is for maintenance plan rather than three years or is, what is this?
Or, or uh, if, if you have a planting plan, monitoring plan under the critical period speculation. But we don't really require five years of maintenance for in our tree. Just like that, you know, that the, we, you know. Ideally, we'll go back uh, every year.
Sure, if we had the resources.
Have the resource, sure. Um, which, so we're about a little over half out of our time. Wondered if you wanna like, uh, I think we've got some, some good input, input related to. You know, possibly citywide corridor or maybe uh, reducing the core or creating some incentive to um. Uh, address the impacts to the area that was impacted in the area that must come back, right? Um, so, so the. I think you still, you know, you, you, and I'm hearing a lot of different things about uh, the fee and loo. But a lot of what you're talking about. Is uh. You know, a situation where you want the tree board to weigh in on this, you know, and, and you wanna maybe look for some areas that. Uh, you know, need uh, you know, some more management. So I think the, the, the benefit of getting some cash instead of having to work out all this out is you could. Take time to figure out the best way to use those resources. And the key is, of course, getting the right number. Or, you know, you, you're gonna work with our system and, you know, you're the, the tree uh, that you're gonna just pay us for. You're, you're gonna cover not only cost of the tree, it's, it's installation, but also some maintenance, you know, over three or five years, whatever that. Could be so, so that's one of the things that was missing in your, you know, your, your agenda cover sheet here. We, we don't know yet what that number is. But um, you know, we tried to just kind of run through a, a quick analysis of what that would be. And so I, I think, you know, you, you, while, while we may have the B and L be the last resort. We need some kind of system inside with that being, who is gonna be regardless of how quickly we let the developer get to it. We also can't keep the, you know, I want to look at what, you know, shoreline, that's something to do with us. I haven't had a chance to do it yet. I want to see what they did. And maybe all this is moot. Uh, we figure out how to do something like shoreline, but. Uh, in the meantime, just having a system, I think we need to say, okay. You know, we, we want to create a system where they incentivizes them to plant trees, right? And so uh, the, uh, the, and, and the way these code sections are set up. It's they, they can get credit for all the trees that they can plant. Uh, they get much better credit because if, if it's a bigger, if it's a larger canopy tree, that eats up more of the canopy that's lost. Uh, but once they get into. Uh, the way this is set up, once they get into plant, you know, the fee and loo, uh, their, their amount. Of uh, canopy credits going down rapidly. So what we end up with is, uh, you know, it's, it's a little bit hard to understand, but I. Uh, Councilman Goldman, I had a conversation uh, about this and. Uh, I was able to reach some kind of understanding what, what the system is into this code language actually does. So, so I just kind of printed out um, my, my email. And, and I think Matt uh, has a version that was put up on the screen and talk about how this would work. Uh, and uh, and maybe it's a feedback on that. Regardless of whether you think, you know, everyone collects these fees, um, this, this could be a starting place to think about it. So. As I, you've done a copy, you share. So as I said, you know, we kind of replaced lost canopy. So uh, there's the, the developer or applicant is encouraged to. To plant within the quarter and get full credit for mature. Um, this uh, canopy coverage of those trees. And that's what these first two paragraphs are talking about. So then. There's this other thing that we need to establish, which is what is, what value represents the cost of each tree. It's escalation and two years of maintenance. But for this example, let's just say it's five hundred dollars per tree. Now, um, the next thing is sort of, we're, we're, we're kind of branching off something that's already in the code. There is a fee in lieu of um, value set. At, you know, each tree you're supposed to be is, that's paid for off site for the very limited situations that are allowed in the current code. It's four hundred fifty square feet. So I took that value and started uh, giving uh, if, if they're planting off site. Uh, in this case, uh, the example was that they planted uh, sixty percent of lost replanted in, in corridor. Uh, they replanted sixty percent at the lower value. Um, if, if, if you multiply, if you say. Point six times two, uh, four fifty, you get two hundred seventy square feet first um, per tree. Um, and so if we say that without remaining forty percent is equal to twenty thousand square feet. Uh, and we apply that reduction to that four hundred fifty square feet, uh, then the, the. The equation at the end of the bullet there represents, you know, this, so this is, um, they're getting. They've got to come up with um, twenty thousand square feet divided by two hundred seventy times five hundred per tree. So they're off site. Being Lou in this case would be thirty seven thousand. Now, if they do that. Third bullet. The applicant was able to plant, um. If they were able to plant seventy five percent in order, or the offsite tree replacement uh, only gets reduced to three hundred and thirty seven. Out of the potential four hundred and fifty. Uh, and so then you, you're, um, and let's just say that equals twenty thousand square feet again. Then you multiply, or you divide twenty thousand square feet by three hundred and thirty seven point five, you get twenty nine thousand. Dollars, uh, six hundred change. So the more canopy they replace. In the corridor. The less this out of corridor fee is gonna be if they decided, if they let you use. And so, um, you know, and, and. We, Councilman Goldman, I was going back and forth and looking at, you know, what, how, how this will work. And it seems to, you know, it, it correlates that. That it's going to create an incentive. And it really boils down to what is that one tree worth? Is it five hundred dollars? Is it a hundred, fifteen hundred dollars? And, and so we just want to reflect the value of that tree and the ability. Uh, you know, to put that money in this tree fund into the city to, to make the best use of it. So uh, with that in mind, uh, is there, is that an approach? You want to continue regardless of how much, how, 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 how easy you make it to get to this. Does that seem like a fair way to go once we figured out what that value of the tree is? Does it uh, create right incentive?
You know, if you, if you make it simple, you're more likely to go. Understood. And to me, the value of the tree is really great, the trees. And if you rig, if you create a system that says. We incentivize you to pack in trees. Because the alternative is you're gonna have to spend more elsewhere. They're gonna attack and treat. And you're thinking what the goal is, which is to. Answer our environment. And tree value, whether it's either in, in corridor or outside the corridor. Has value based, but it's not, it shouldn't be otherwise. Like, yeah, see. Everybody run now. They will spend the least amount. But that may not be to your, your, your goal. Which is enhancing the environment.
Can I respond? It's, so, so that. Uh, assumes that, you know, that the process, that there was no discussion of that in the creation of the plan. That the city arborist has to approve. So the, the point of, of saying you will come up with a. Replacement plan is for the city arborist and the applicant service to go through that. And the city arborist knows what the tree board. Uh, priorities are, and they, they, they walk through this and they say, and city artist knows that people. Are not gonna want trees in their views. So they're only doing, you know, smaller trees in those areas. So there's a lot of nuance uh, that. I feel like you left out, Councilman Lebo. That, that there's, we're not, we're not gonna improve this until we have a plan that says here's how we're going to do it.
Trees where you want trees.
Kind of a little bit more than that, or is this chaos? I mean.
No, it's not.
Just leave it up to some kind of, they could just like.
This, this goes back to the first question, which is. You've got a review process. And you say to. You want to restore. Restore the area that's been stirred. It's less area. You've got a tree board, you've got an arborist. They gotta go through a review process. You don't want to overpack in there. So you say to them. You know, put trees here, but you also have the ability to put trees elsewhere.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but if you set up a system that incentivized something to do something. You, you, you end up with unintended consequences. And in fact, you may want trees elsewhere. Just make it simple.
So there would be, there would be a plan that. We've talked about a replacement plan and you're saying that. The tree board would have input into that. Obviously, the arborist has to approve it and they would come up with. These. You, you don't want to say prioritize, but I think they would be prioritizing areas of the city they think should be approved for trees.
And you know what? Those are the people who have the best interest at.
Yes.
Not a count, like a counter. Or should be talking about policy, which is who can restore the area and the, the citizens benefit from.
Not deciding the exact places. Don't have that info right now. Got it. Thank you.
Um, so they, that, you know, a tree in this configuration is worth three hundred thirty three dollars and over there it's worth a hundred fifty eight, but over here. It's worth a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
I, yes, Councilman Riddle, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, I've been listening in as I've been driving in. Thank you for your patience. Getting here a bit late. Um, so when I think about the value of a tree, I mean, that's like the biggest sort of, to me, question, what is the value of the tree? And. It has value in different areas. It's sort of, we've been discussing. So there's the stormwater impacts and, and its benefits to stormwater. Retention, stormwater filtration. There's its impact to improving heat island and mitigating heat island, heat island effect. There's obviously the aesthetics, which. In the corridor is a big piece of this. It's that reducing that concrete corridor into something that looks more like. It's probably, there's obviously habitat for animals, birds and others. And then there's that whole infilling spaces that don't have canopy equity aspect of it. And, and many of those are at odds, right? Stormwater management along the corridor with the aesthetics doesn't help with the equity and the habitat. So. I'm gonna, I, I really need to know where we come up with what the amount of the tree is. Because it's gonna have different values and different uses. It's used along as a street tree is gonna be more around heat island effect and. Storm filtration, storm water filtration, but not habitat. We certainly don't want to encourage animals to live. They want to live where there's understory and, and in backyard along the street. So. If we're talking about. Trees that aren't on the corridor anymore, we don't have any room for their additional trees they have to replace. If we're gonna be replacing those in private property backyards, we're gonna replace those street tree locations. The values of those are different to me. Um, and I think if we set values for its function, that could be a way of us saying this is. Where our, our goals are, you know, if it's. If it's increasing canopy coverage in an area that's under a certain percentage, it's got this dollar value. If it's. A street tree, it's a different dollar value. And then they're gonna run their numbers to see what's. The cheapest and best for them, but we're at least encouraging through. Dollars where we want them to place trees in general. Not necessarily specific roads or anything of that nature. Nice questions. Follow up, so. Setting value in regard to a tree's function. And so we've already talked about putting trees in under tree areas. What other? Where else? Like you, you mentioned storm facilities or like what other? I, I was, it's. So Coramir Samamish had a study done as to what the economic value is for. And they were able to quantify for, I think they looked mostly at, I think, stormwater management. Um, in heat island and, and I, and, and you know. But we can find those numbers. They may not be easy for us to find, but there are people who have. Provided, calculations to know. If the tree is providing stormwater in a, in a. In a, in, in a high impervious. Uh, surface area. Um, there are studies that show that if you leave a tree in a development rather than replacing it. That existing canopy has a quantifiable benefit. To stormwater management of that site and could in fact. I don't know, reduce their stormwater halt, right? So there's, there's some studies that have given us the ability to, to, to understand that. I don't think it's like a table that has. Yeah, we're, I'm, I'm thinking of a dollar, some information with some studies that have been even done, having the lake that something of our own. Um. That's my thought.
Steve would like to comment on that. And then Tom, you have, next thing guys, we are about five minutes away from probably having.
I, I think we have to remember that, um, that this is in context of mitigation for a development project. And so there's, there's only so much we can uh, collect and still not be, you know, making it possible to do that project. Now, you can totally use that number to disincentivize to do any of the improvement. But uh, I, what I was thinking we come up with is a, is a number from the um, ISA, the uh, International Arborist Society. That represented the things that I talked about. And so that, that's really where we start. And then I guess, you know, we have to determine. Is, is that something that you want to nuance burger?
In there. Yeah, uh, and actually, Mayor, thank you. Um, I just wanted to kind of close the peer about next steps. Because this is preliminary discussion. This is really not even, you were looking for feedback. And so I just wanted to check with. The staff and administration in terms of timeline, what you're looking for. I'm assuming this is a preliminary touch where. We'll take, you'll take what you've heard from here. We'll have a series of, of touches moving forward.
That's right, yeah. Let's take it. Um, you know, ideally, we've got uh, something closer to a draft for the next meeting uh, this month.
Okay.
Um, or first meeting in um.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted.
On point, um, since we brought up the tree board a few times, I'm hoping that their first, their next meeting will be the first week of May. I'm hoping that can be an agenda for them. So if you have a draft, that can go to the tree boards. That way they kind of formalize what their role in this process might look like.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna say one last thing, you know, and all in, uh, what we really need to do is fifty years from now, we want to make sure the canopy is better than it is now. Doesn't really matter what part of the city it is, but we also got to make sure that trees that are getting planted or planted in places that. They will survive and people want to take care of. So, you know, it's not all about us. It's, you know, let's be honest, a hundred years ago, there was a tree in this whole city. And then they all came up and then people came down and all the people came in and cut the trees back down and built houses. Now we're in this place in a time when people are saying, no, we want the trees. And we're kind of the stock gap generation right now. We're trying to keep it go this way. So we need to look at the big picture. John is right. We need to put trees where people want. You know, and so let's figure out the best way to get the trees where we want them. And I really am a pro. As far as a, a forestry plan, I think it's getting time. The city needs to really start looking into that. Because we do have a lot of trees that are going out that we need to take care of. So. Is that, I think we're gonna go upstairs and.